Okay, now you're all set.
Great, thank you Vanessa. Hi, everybody. It is 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 30, 2021. Meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen. All members of the board are present. And again, I'll call the meeting to order twice. Once now and once after I read the governor's intro. And Governor Baker, if you're listening, I'm getting tired of this. So let's start meeting in person at some point soon. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participations at the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of South Rose website at www.southrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southrowtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on South Rose's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right, intro done, call meeting to order. We've got one housekeeping matter before we move on to the public hearing, and that is the consent agenda for the open session meetings of March 16, 2021. Ms. Malinowski.
Yep, no holds.
Sorry. You stole my thunder, Chelsea.
Sorry.
That's all right, all right. Mr. Stivers.
I found five typos, most of which are not big, but ready?
It's less than I'm ready that...
Katie, ready?
All right, go ahead, Sam.
Line 46, "Mad" should be "Made."
Okay, that's one.
Line 175, need an S on the end of my name.
All right.
Line 217, "Bring" should be "Bridge." Line 236, I believe, "Why Not?" should be "Whyshun."
Yeah, you're right about that.
In line 276, there's an extra "the" document. It's like a cut and paste. And that's it for me.
All right, anyone else? No, all right, with those edits, I'll move to approve the open session meetings of March 16, 2021.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. He is aye. All right, those are approved unanimously, and we are on to public hearing. And, you know, other than a quick intro for me, and then I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, who has been doing yeoman's work on this. Yeoman's work on this, Lisa? Although I think yeoman's is a real word, so along with, you know, some other members of this committee, members of the EDC, CHOPSY, and some others. You know, the interesting thing is, and, you know, I went through this with the Main Street projects, and others have gone through with other projects. In some respects, the planning and putting things down on paper is the easy part. The implementation is the hard part. But if it was easy, it wouldn't be worth doing. So again, kudos to everyone who's gotten us to where we are, and hopefully tonight is another, you know, important step in the right direction. So with that, Lisa, I am going to turn things over to you.
All right, wonderful, thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody for coming today. Through the last few months, we've heard some pretty consistent themes. Why now? Why, what is the purpose of the downtown district? Why this document? Why the Board of Selectmen and not Planning Board sponsoring? Has enough discussion and time been taken to properly vet the document? Who was involved in getting feedback for the document? And questions on the current zoning map? So I'd like to address a couple of these as we move forward. The reason for now is quite simple. We have an updated and new, I guess you could say, Main Street, almost complete, which stopped just prior of the downtown. We can all agree an upgrade is needed. Part of that will take place when the drainage issues in the downtown are dealt with later this year, from a curbing and roadway perspective at least. But the facts remain that a large majority of the taxpayers would like to see something done to update and make downtown more walkable, create opportunities for social gathering, create a greater sense of community, create diversity in housing, and offer more services such as retail or restaurant via small-scale development. The purpose of the downtown district is best described in three pieces. One, to revitalize the downtown. Two, to make sure that the downtown, I'm sorry, make the downtown more attractive to businesses to broaden the tax base and hopefully potentially help to reduce taxes. And three, fulfill a promise we've been making through our master plan for many years to diversify Southborough's housing stock, among other things. Most important, this is what every master plan developed has said Southborough wants and needs, including the current plan being worked on now. Moving this proposal forward and hopefully approving it at town meeting will fulfill a set of promises that Southborough has been making to itself and residents for several decades. We have an opportunity to change one village of zoning bylaw, the Business Village District created in April 12, 1993, and start the process of bringing our current zoning up to date one step at a time, which I think, again, is long overdue. Why this document hasn't been vetted? This current document was created with feedback from many stakeholders. There were many meetings over the last two years, as well as joint meetings that consisted of Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Economic Development Committee, Southborough Housing Opportunities Committee, and other interested board committees and commissions. The draft document has continued to evolve with the version you will see tonight, and based on additional questions and concerns could potentially change again before the warrant is printed. Much collaboration has brought us to where we are today. Why is the Board of Selectmen and not Planning Board sponsoring the article? When the EDC spoke to the Planning Board over two years ago to update the zoning for downtown, it was recommended that they draft something and bring it back for further review. Through the discussion process that followed, the Planning Board thought it made sense for the Board of Selectmen to sponsor, and they would provide feedback as well as host the public hearings as required. Planning Board hearings are still ongoing. The zoning map has created many questions from the Board of Selectmen and citizens as well. We are appreciative that Attorney Costa is here to provide some feedback and guidance on this and other questions and concerns throughout the forum. Judy Barrett is unavailable to be here tonight, but any questions specific for Judy will be forwarded after the meeting, and responses will be shared at a future meeting. So let me just see if Attorney Costa is here. I do not see him. Attorney Costa, if you could hear...
Is it the EDC A50?
That's what I'm asking, if he's here, if he could raise his hand, and we'll bring you over. Okay, he had a deposition he said should be done. He was hoping he wouldn't be a few minutes late, but we will certainly keep an eye out for him. I know the board had specific questions for Adam, but we will reach out to him and see how much longer it is before him. So in the meantime, I think, Mr. Stivers, did you have, I know you had some questions. Are there any that we can discuss with the board now in anticipation of Adam coming?
I guess, Lisa, I'm interested in sort of hearing what the public has to say and getting Adam's take on some of these things. I mean, I had maybe three or four more substantive things and a few small points. I mean, I'm interested in the split lot question that a number of people have raised questions about. Interested in the thresholds for site plan review. I think there's some inconsistency in there, and I'm interested in the change for the 80% lot coverage thing. I think there may be better ways to get at that one. So, but I'm happy to hold until we hear from the public on that.
Okay, is there, Chelsea, did you...
I think I have one that maybe isn't necessarily for Attorney Costa. On Part 4, Section H5, which is the affordable section, can you elaborate on kind of where we're at with the percentage and then the minimum number of units?
Yes, and let me just share my screen. And... All right, does everybody see this? Chelsea, do you see the document?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, let's see. That was on the affordable piece? Or... Sorry, yes, you said Section 5?
Yes.
Okay, can you repeat your question again? Sorry.
So can you elaborate on where we're at with the percentage and then the number of, the minimum number of units to activate the affordable component?
Okay, so the affordable, let me go back up, is right here. So it was a mistype in what Judy originally did. In the meeting that, the working meeting we had with Planning Board, they were pretty consistent that they wanted at least one out of four. So the percentage actually should have changed to 25% of the units. You'll see, I highlighted it in red, I noticed that as well, so.
Thank you.
Just see if Attorney Costa is here.
He was there a minute ago, he disappeared.
Okay. So, yes, Attorney Costa's been made a panelist now. Yes, okay, so...
Can I just follow up very quickly on Chelsea's point, or did you have something else, Chelsea?
That was all I had, Marty, thank you.
No, and Lisa, I'm glad in your intro, one of the things you focused on was the affordable housing, because I think in some respects, it's gotten lost in the mix a little bit here. And that one of the, again, you go back to the various affordable, excuse me, the various master plans that have been put together and other studies. You know, it is, it is a big deal that Southborough can and should focus on making its downtown more vibrant and more business-friendly. But in some respects, it's even a bigger deal that we take this opportunity to do what we say we've been wanting to do for decades, which is make Southborough a more diverse community in terms of its housing supply. You know, we've been talking a good game, and it will just be a shame. Again, it's why I'm thanking you for including it as a big part of the conversation. It will be a shame that if we lose out on this opportunity to bring some affordable housing and some diversity of housing to our downtown area.
Okay, and I will say, Marty, CHOPSY has been pretty vocal about this as well. Initially, it was, I think it was eight units or more with a 12 and 1/2%, I think was where we started at, but through CHOPSY, they were pretty adamant that if we're going to do something, you know, we really need to do something, so. Okay, Chelsea, was that it? Okay, so I am going to stop sharing for the moment. Good evening, Adam, welcome, you are muted.
I'm muted and my video is off. Hi, everyone.
There you are. Good evening, Adam, I just gave kind of an introduction to, you know, some of the concerns. If you want to take a second and introduce yourself, I'm sure there's some folks that haven't had the opportunity to hear you. That would be great.
That'd be great, so, so thank you, Lisa, I'm Adam Costa. I'm an attorney, I'm with the firm of Me, Tom, and Costa. We have offices in Newburyport and Milis, and we are a municipal law firm, so we represent municipalities like yours, often as general counsel, but then we are brought in as special counsel from time to time on different projects, typically projects that have some land use or zoning component. So I've been working for the better part of 15 years assisting different cities and towns with zoning proposals, amendments, like what you've got here before you. So I was engaged, my firm was engaged about, gosh, over a year ago, I would say, we were brought in initially by the EDC. I had some number of meetings and dealings with Claire and Mareka in reviewing an early version of your downtown district, which had a different name at that time. And I had substantially revised the document that you were working with, which I think had been adapted from another community. And I had also recommended, really from the date of my involvement, that the town enlist the assistance of somebody with planning experience, a certified planner or planning consultant, somebody that, in addition to me offering my legal perspective on what would work within the context of your existing bylaw, somebody who could, you know, come downtown, get a sense of the environment, look at the downtown area on a parcel-by-parcel basis, and then look to the zoning and say, okay, well, what is it that you want to accomplish? And how can we go about doing that in a manner where you're going to get what it is that you want? You're going to incentivize economic development. But at the same time, you're going to have the necessary protections built in. So, you know, enter Judy Barrett. She became involved for a number of months. She essentially started with what I had and went in a very different direction with it, not for better or for worse, although I guess for better, because I think that the finished product is a positive one. And I was then shown a few months ago, I think it was around the holidays, a version of the downtown district that Judy had prepared. I made some recommendations with respect to that document, and we've had a couple of meetings since then, and that's resulted in the document that is now your working draft. So I'm here tonight to maybe answer any legal questions that you have. I will caveat that by saying that I'm not the principal author of the document that you now have before you. Judy Barrett is the principal author. I'm familiar with it, I've made revisions to it, I've made recommendations and annotations, but it's not, you know, first and foremost, my work product. So, you know, I can speak to it, but if there are questions that are better put to a planning consultant, we may have to save those and consult with Judy and then maybe provide responses at a later time.
Right, thank you, Adam. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the board first, and then I'm going to open it up to the public. I know that the board had some questions. So, Sam, do you want to...
Sure, I'm happy to start. Good evening, Adam, thanks for coming in, appreciate your input on this. One of the things we've already heard about is some concern from local residents about the impact of the zoning map on this, or interaction with the zoning map on this. And as you probably are aware, there are a number of split lots in this overlay district now in terms of combination of residential and downtown district. And people have expressed concern about what might happen with some of those, i.e., people might be motivated to split their lot and sell part of the lot in the downtown district to a developer who could put together a sizable parcel and create a sizable project out of those kinds of pieces. And I think that it's useful to understand, you know, how likely is that? What's the process that that might happen with? I mean, it's my understanding that any current split lot, the more restrictive zoning applies for that particular split lot, but I'm not the attorney or zoning expert. But, so any thoughts you might have in terms of what the risk is with something like that happening? Although ultimately, it looks like the Planning Board will be involved with whatever happens, particularly in terms of larger projects, so there's a check and balance built in there. But are there ways, in your experience, that someone could sort of take advantage of this process through the split lot process and create something that we would have to approve, even though maybe it's something that the Planning Board might not be comfortable with?
Adam, do you want me to share the map?
So, so let me provide some, a bit of background first, and then maybe you can do that, Lisa. But I want to use the opportunity, and Mr. Stivers, I appreciate the questions, and they're thoughtful questions, and I think that as a backdrop, and I'll get to the issue in a moment of the split lots, because you do have provisions in your existing zoning that address split lots, and I think that there are some opportunities that present themselves with respect to how you address those split lots or choose not to address them in the context of the zoning proposal that's now before you. But by way of context, I think that, you know, something that I discussed with Claire and Mareka not long after I got involved, probably at the very first meeting we had, but it got repeated, it, you know, the succession of meetings we had as I worked through different drafts of the early version of the bylaw was that, you know, these districts, and I see it more with village business or downtown districts more than I do with many others. There's a push and a pull, it's a bit of a balancing, because, and I'm going to speak very candidly here, most communities that have opted to investigate possibilities with respect to creating zoning that is specific to a village business district or a downtown district are doing so in an effort to maybe revitalize the district as it exists. I worked in the city of Methuen, obviously a very different community from Southborough, but I worked in the city of Methuen back two or three or four years ago on a smart zoning proposal in their downtown area. And their objective was to revitalize the downtown area. They had issues with respect to dilapidated buildings, some of which were historic buildings, and they had challenges to redevelopment of those sites. They had walkability issues, they had parking issues, and they had seen a real decline in mom-and-pop stores. And so we tried to approach that from a, sort of a multifaceted kind of a way, creating not only incentives to allow for the creation of these retail uses, these restaurant uses, smaller-scale mom-and-pop-type shops, but also working residential components into the downtown as well. So you had sort of built-in patrons for these various locations that we hope could pop up throughout the downtown area. And in doing that, in any community, whether it's Methuen or Southborough or anywhere else in Massachusetts, or in the country for that matter, in doing that, you've got to relinquish some of the discretionary authority that you've got as a municipality, because from a developer's perspective, and I think I can appreciate this perspective, because in addition to representing mostly municipalities, I have a handful of developer clients too, so I've been on the other side of the table. Developers want a streamlined route to permitting. They don't want costly or time-consuming permitting, otherwise they're disinterested. They want a certain degree, they want a degree of certainty with respect to the permitting process. And what that means is that doesn't mean no review whatsoever. It doesn't mean everything is going to be allowed by right with no mechanism to ensure that there's a system of checks and balances. It means that the reviews tend to be more of the non-discretionary type than the discretionary. They tend to be site plan reviews, or in some cases, simply reviews at the staff level, let's say by a building commissioner or a building inspector or a city or town planner, as opposed to being comprehensive reviews, discretionary reviews by a special permit ranking committee, where an applicant doesn't know whether it's going to get a yes or a no when the process is completed. And so I provide that backdrop, because this has been a struggle with this project in Southborough from day one, because we were brought in, I was brought in, I thought, to try and work on a version of the bylaw that would incentivize development in the downtown district. But I also recognize that there is a reluctance to relinquish the control that exists for fear, and to some extent rightfully so. Fear that relinquishing that control means that you're going to get something that you really don't want in the downtown area. So to balance that, you've got to try to create this system where, you know, yes, you're allowing more than you might allow elsewhere through some sort of a non-discretionary process, but you're not allowing developers to get a foot in the door, and then, and you end up with some monstrosity that's so contradictory to the scheme, your vision for the downtown area, that they found and run around the bylaw provision. So you're highlighting of this split lot provision that exists in your bylaw now, and as I understand it, I had a lengthy conversation with Lisa earlier today, and she brought up the map, which I guess, Lisa, if you want to share that now, you can. She brought up the map and highlighted for me that, you know, you've got this situation, you know, not entirely everywhere downtown, not a situation that is rampant in the district, but that exists with respect to a few lots, and I'm looking here on the map, you can see it to Lot 10, Lot 12, Lot 14, and to some extent, Lot 25, where you've got portions of these lots, the rear portions of Lots 10, 12, and 14, that are within the downtown district. And when I say that, all I mean is, what has been proposed, and it doesn't have to be this way, and we can have a lengthier discussion on this point tonight, but what has been proposed, and I think this is simply the consequence of where we started. We started with the discussion of your village business districts. You've got, you've got a village business district that is comprised of three non-contiguous sections of your town. The downtown business village district is often referred to as the downtown business village district, but the truth is, you don't actually have a district by that name. It's just the downtown piece of the business village district, the one-third piece of that district that is downtown. And so that's where we started with this. We started with the thought of, well, do we do this as an overlay? Do we break this district apart from the others? And where we've ended up, and what you see here on this plan, is simply replacing the downtown piece of your business village district with something that we're now calling your downtown district, and maintaining the existing boundaries of that district, and just doing a complete one-for-one swap. Take the current downtown portion of the business village district, call it the downtown district, maintain the existing boundaries of the downtown piece of the business village district. And when you do that, you've got this plan we see here with the back portions of these lots, 10, 12, and 14 in particular, being within the district. And so you raise the potential that what could those owners do? Well, in the future, they could, as you alluded to, they could attempt to divide those lots through some sort of an A&R procedure, and a developer could acquire the rear portion of those three lots, attempt to combine them, and then attempt to advance some sort of development that might be of a, on a greater scale than what is otherwise being considered for the downtown area. Not these 2,000, 3,000 square foot uses, but rather a building and establishment that is much larger in size. A point that you made, which is an important one, is that the likelihood of that happening, I don't think is great. I mean, number one, I think there are some uncertainties here as to whether that could be done. There needs to be, you know, practically speaking, there needs to be a negotiation with multiple different property owners. There needs to be a process to divide these lots. There's some question, and we'll get into this in a moment, when we deal with the split lot provisions, as to whether these split lot pieces could even qualify for the sort of extensive development that you might be envisioning. And then, as you look to the existing version of the downtown district, you'll see that, as you mentioned, the thresholds are fairly low in terms of what triggers minimally major site plan review, but in most instances, also a special permit. They're lower than even what we began with in an effort to try to incentivize economic development. So that's fine, that's a discretionary decision for the town, but I think it means as you make those controls more stringent, it makes it less and less likely that a development of that magnitude is going to be not just permissible, but permissible by right. It's probably going to be, even if it could get done, even if all the hurdles could be overcome, it's likely going to still require some sort of a discretionary thumbs up from the permitting authority, which of course could quickly become a thumbs down if that authority doesn't consider it to be consistent with the plan for the downtown district. To address the split lot provisions, so let me just pull up your existing bylaws. So Section 174-5 of your existing bylaw is entitled "Interpretation of Boundaries", and it's a relatively short section of your bylaws, has three subsections, A, B, C, and D. And it's subsection D is a dog that addresses split lots. And it's convenient that Southborough has this sort of a provision. I work in a number of communities that don't address split lots whatsoever in their zoning, and so you have to try to find the default position with respect to properties that might be split by zoning boundaries, but you address it explicitly. And it's almost what you said, Mr. Stivers, but it's actually a bit different than that. So it says, "Where a district boundary divides a lot existing at the time that such line is adopted, the regulations relating to the less restricted portion of the lot may extend not more than 30 feet into the more restricted portion of the lot, provided that the lot has frontage in the less restricted district." So to try to turn that into plain English, if you've got a lot that's split by a zoning boundary, one zoning district is going to be, unless they're equal, which is rare, one zoning district in some respects is going to be more stringent than the other. One zoning district is going to be more restrictive than the other. And so what this sort of a provision, again, I see this kind of a provision in many communities where they attend, that they attempt to give the owner of a split lot some benefit of extending the less restricted zoning distinction a certain distance into the remainder of the lot. So what this would say, let's look at one of these lots we've got on the screen here. Let's look at Lot 10 by way of example, since it's the first one moving north to south. So Lot 10, looks like you've got about 375 to 400 feet of depth for that lot. It's not a perfect rectangle, so call it 400 feet of depth. It looks like, you know, the rear, I don't know, what is that? The rear 150 feet or so of that lot are located in what is now a portion of the business village district, what will become a portion of the downtown district, exactly where Lisa's cursor just was. So what this existing provision would mean, if we did nothing other than adopt new zoning and let the current zoning provisions apply, it would mean that the owner of Lot 10 could extend, if that, let's say that were to be a vacant lot, just for, to make the... could extend, if that, let's say that were to be a vacant lot, just for, to make the analysis simple. Lot 10 is vacant, there's no structure on it. There's a proposal to, to do something on that lot, and the owner wants to use it in a manner that is consistent, not with what the R2 allows, but consistent with what the, the, the downtown district allows. They could not only use the rear 150 feet of depth and, you know, full width of that lot, they could extend that 150 feet, another 30 feet into the residential district. For a total of about 180 feet in depth, 100 feet in width. And that's the portion of the lot that could be used consistent with the more relaxed standard standards that are, are applicable or will be applicable in the downtown district. So that's how the zoning currently reads. And that's a, that's a townwide, that, that's a matter of townwide applicability. It's not unique to this district as it exists today. It's not unique to this district as it might be revised. It, it's, it's left in your hands as, as a board and ultimately in the hands of town meeting, if you want to tinker with the existing provisions. You could modify the interpretation of boundaries clause that exists in the zoning bylaw today as it applies townwide. You could include a provision in this downtown district that is specific to the downtown district. It would say something like, you know, notwithstanding the other provisions of the zoning bylaw that might apply to split lots for any lot that is split by the downtown district boundary, blah, 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 blah. And you go on to, to address how you want to address these districts. The other option is not, not do what has been proposed here, which is simply swap out the DD for the former Business Village District in this location and actually modify the district boundary. Say, listen, these lots already have residential uses on them, lot 10, lot 12, lot 14. That's the obvious intent of these lots. They don't currently have practical frontage on a roadway. Park Street on the ground doesn't extend that far to the rear of these lots. So you could simply modify this boundary. Where the boundary where it cuts through the words Park Street, you could just have it follow along the right-of-way that is Park Street and then the, the common driveway that extends down to lot 25. And just essentially follow the rear lot lines of 10, 12, and, and even 14. And, and simply rezone those remaining portions of those lots, residential like the rest of those lots. And, and cut them out of the downtown district altogether and thereby completely eliminate any fear that you might have about, well, what could be done there if some developer gets its hands on, you know, carved out portions of three or four different lots? With that, I'll take a breath.
That's helpful. Thanks for that explanation.
Sure.
Um. Does anyone else on the board have a question about what Attorney Costa has just said?
I do. Hi, Mr. Costa, Marty Healy, how are you?
Good.
I think, just, I, I think it's a, it's a relatively simple question, and hopefully it's a relatively simple answer. What you described in, in terms of, of options, let's say the options other than simply doing adopting the, 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 a, a new map to overlay exactly with the existing map. Put that option to the side. The other options that you described from a zoning drafting perspective, are those, is that a difficult lift? And whether or not it, it is a difficult lift, does it complicate in any way the, the other zoning language and zoning approaches that are laid out in the documents that, that Judy put together and you've taken a look at?
Sure. So, so thank you for that question, Mr. Healy. So I, I, I think that the, the answer, the, the first part of your question is no, it's not, it's not a difficult lift to craft a zoning provision, a a simple sentence or two that would become a part of the downtown district to address split lots. Similarly, it's not a difficult lift to, to modify or amend the existing language in your bylaw that addresses split lots. The issue with any zoning change, and, and I, I feel like I have a bit of a broken record in this regard because I've said this more times than I can count. You know, it's, it's, there's a domino effect sometimes when you, when you make zoning modifications. I had a, I represent the community as general counsel. They recently proposed a, 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 a new self, what they, what they deemed to be a self-contained zoning amendment to allow for age-restricted housing. And they wanted to define all these terms that they were using within the bylaw. And they were using terms like two-family dweller and cottage dwelling and townhouse. And I said, well, that's fine. But remember, if you incorporate definitions for those terms, you now have to scan the remaining 150 pages of your bylaw to be sure that you haven't used those terms elsewhere in a manner that you, you, you didn't, you didn't mean for them to be defined the same way. You had a different definition in mind, or your predecessor, or the drafters 50 years ago had a different idea in mind when they used the term townhouse. So my only concern would be when we look at the different options. Option one, amend the existing section 174-5. Option two, craft new, a new provision that's part of this downtown district that addresses split lots. Option three, amend the zoning map to cut out portions of these residential properties. What are the ramifications of each of those options? Option one, if you don't have any difficulty now, if you've not had difficulty over the past year, five years, 20 years, with your split lots provision as it exists today, do you really want to mess with a good thing? If it hasn't caused trouble, do we want to modify it simply because we're concerned about the effects that it would have on this downtown district, knowing that it also changes the interpretation on a townwide basis? Similarly, option two, including a provision within the downtown district that addresses split lots, that's cleaner. You don't have to worry as much about ancillary effects in other districts or on a townwide basis. You do have to be mindful and certainly train your staff and advise potential applicants that yeah, for this downtown district, even though we have this provision that everybody's been familiar with, because it's been in the books for 20 years regarding split lots, we now have this superseding provision within the downtown district so that the standard provision doesn't apply. Hence that, you know, preface, notwithstanding anything else to the contrary in this bylaw, as I had said earlier. That's how you'd start the sort of provision that you would draft as part of the DD district. So you just need to be mindful of that, that you're treating the DD district differently. So none of these are heavy lifts. Even the zoning map change is not a heavy lift. You're going to have to create a map that colors this district differently anyway and calls it the DD instead of the Business Village District. And whether you choose to tweak the modif, the boundaries, modify the boundaries of the district at the same time that you do that, that's not a heavy lift either. You know, politically, that's, you know, that's beyond my pay grade, whether it's, whether it's difficult politically. But in terms of the legal work, none of these are, are difficult lifts.
I'm, I'm all set then, Lisa. Thanks very much.
Marty?
Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, talk to Lisa.
Lisa, okay. Make a comment to Marty's point. I'm, I'm actually interested in the modify the zoning map option. However, I would point out that I think last night's planning board meeting, there was a request to modify the downtown district map by another property owner in another way to include more property in it. So I think there's an issue relative to how much change do you want to put on the zoning map and how long will that take, et cetera, et cetera? Well, that creates some unintended consequences elsewhere. So I think that could be a bit of a slippery slope, but this particular issue seems to be pretty focused on these, these three lots. So more, more to come.
And Sam, I'll, I'll add to that. There's actually six, six lots. Seven, actually, if you include, this is Ted's towing. So we include a portion of Ted's. So it would be lots 10, 12, and 14 on Lattice Squama, 35 Boston Road, a portion of their lot is also in this. Two Foley has a portion of their lot as well. And then obviously 25 Park Street. And I might note that this line that's crafted here is actually on the CSX property. So I know that trucks were being parked down here, so I don't know if that's the driveway for that. When you do a Google Earth, you can see that, I don't know if it's Falcone, but there were trucks parked within a CSX lot. So Park Street actually ends right here at the base of Ted's towing. So, and that's where this lot, all of this here is, is part of CSX. So any talk of potentially extending Park Street would have to be either through parcels potentially or through CSX. So.
Lisa, is lot 35, is that a residential lot?
It is. There's a house on it. And then Falcone's is right here. So I, I'm not quite sure the reasoning for it, Marty, but again, that, that's another conversation. And one of the things I was going to suggest is based on how the conversation went tonight and, and any guidance that Adam could give us, I think it would be helpful to bring in, you know, those seven property owners and have a discussion and see, let them be a part of the decision as to, you know, what they may be interested in doing on their lot. And hopefully there'll be some form of consensus, but I think I, I think that's important. And I think that's the next step that we need to take. Obviously, I'm, I'm not, I don't have any desire to dictate at this point to somebody what they should or shouldn't do with their lot. So I think it's a worthy discussion and that's something I plan on spearheading and reaching out to the homeowners within, before the end of this week to see if we can set something up. So I know that the public has questions on this as well. So I can't see if anyone has raised their hand.
Mr. Miller has his hand up.
Okay. I will leave it to the will of the board. We can continue through with Sam's questions or seeing as I know Mr. Miller wanted to speak about this, we might as well just continue the discussion and bring him over. I will, okay, let's do that. If we could bring Mr. Miller over. Thank you, Sam. I can't see the participant list, so I didn't know if someone had their hand raised.
I'm here.
Good evening, Mr. Miller. Thank you and welcome for coming.
Thank you.
I just, I'm sure that you heard some of what Attorney Costa has said and we're interested to hear your, your comments. And if, you know, you have further questions or things you might like to ask him as well.
I, I did. And I thank you for recognizing me and I appreciate Mr. Costa's appearance, particularly since he sort of helped make my argument that the map is a problem and it needs to be addressed. And I appreciate the clarification that more parcels are involved than Mr. Costa initially named by my count. It is number five park. That's the J and J Automotive, which my neighbor Ray Helkinson, last night in the planning board meeting helped me pointed out that the, the building in which the commercial activity takes place presently is actually excluded from that map. That, the, the, the building actually sits in the residential district. But number five park, 10, 12.
Mr. Miller, may I interrupt you for just one second?
Sure thing.
So there was a use variance that was granted on five park. That's why the building was allowed to be in the residential district.
Right, right. Acknowledged. And thank you for that clarification. It, it doesn't really sort of, the point is that the map doesn't address the reality on the ground. But in addition to number five park, we've got 10, 12, and 14 Lattice Squama as noted. 25 Park.
Yep.
That's a partial again. Most, but not all of the CSX property is actually, so the CSX property is actually split as well, a small fragment of it. Number four, I'm sorry, 25 Park CSX, Two Foley Drive, right through
Yep.
An unsuspecting residence living room, 35 Boston Road. And also number 10 Newton by my calculation. So that puts, that means nine total properties are affected, not three, which is what the EDC frequently likes to cite. And if you take, I, I just want to alert both the planning board and concerned citizens and abutters and the affected property owners, the fact that 10, 12, and 14, the parcel, partial lots at 10, 12, and 14 Lattice Squama, 25 Park and, and 4 Park and the CSX parcel, if you could get those all together, they're all contiguous lots on the west side of the tracks, that's nearly four acres by my calculation. And boy, is that a tempting bit of property. And, you know, when you review the, the comments of the EDC committee members over numerous meetings, which I've done now, what you see is that, you know, as, as people who are specialized in development, understandably would think, they, they salivate over the potential of this. And they talk about the fact that you could rewrite the article quite easily, as Mr. Costa just indicated, and change the map. But that to do so, in the words of Mr. Anderson of the EDC, would just remove some potential, some future potential. And they're quite concerned about, you know, the, the clock is running out on changing the map. They know it's a problem. They've acknowledged it. I think the BOS is quite aware that the EDC's official position, they have voted on it in their March 12th meeting and ratified the minutes on March 25th, that they want to bring forth this article without any map change, but with a contingency that the map is to be addressed at some unspecified future date, which has got to be the most ridiculous solution I have ever heard. It, it's just untenable. I think everybody on this call knows it. You've got a big problem with the map. Mr. Costa's just indicated that the map is not a big heavy lift to redraw. And to redraw to reflect the fact that there is consensus that, you know, improvements along Main Street along at the corner and at the corner of Boston Road and Newton are warranted and desired, including by me as it happens. But what I think not just, and you know, it's not just the, the, the people who own these parcels, but it's the abutters. And I, as I've made clear from the beginning, I'm, I'm one of those folks. They have to be very, very concerned. You know, the, the, on your last meeting, there was a kind of conversation with a kind of grim glee over the issue of eminent domain and possibility that the mass electric parcel could be targeted by the BOS. And you guys decided to sort of table that. I've heard on other boards and other committees speculation about wastewater treatment going there. And, you know, anybody that, that, that owns an affected property or that abuts an affected property has to also be concerned about the possibility, not the intention of a future eminent domain grab, that here's land that sits in this and we'll take your backyard because we want, you know, shop see. You know, I, I've, I've now listened to countless hours of these meetings to try to catch up on this stuff. And, and for people listening who aren't familiar with what shop see is, I mean, Ms. Malinowski could speak to this, she serves on, on this committee, but it is the South Borough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee. I just want to get that out there because there may be listeners who like me, were not familiar with it. Charged with the study, promotion, and facilitation of affordable housing in town. And, you know, they're naturally quite interested, you know, and in October 6, 2020 meeting, they, they speculated about maybe squeezing 25 units of affordable housing into downtown. And, and I was struck when Judy Barrett, who once again, I, I hear the thunder in the distance, but, but, you know, I never see the lightning strike. Ms. Barrett never seems to be around. When that conversation came up, she, she warned, she said, well, we don't want this on Main Street. We can't get this on Main Street, but do it on the periphery. Well, the periphery in this case would be down Newton, down Boston Road, and down Park Street. And, you know, it, it's, when I first raised the issue of the map in front of this board, I, you know, I was a little bit mystified. And it's the same thing with the EDC, how a, a lot of really smart people gave me the answer that the map is the map. It's always been the map. No one's ever asked about the map. Why are you asking about the map? Well, it turns out, you know, the map has been discussed so far as I, you know, I've seen meetings going back to 2017. So the map was discussed at considerable length. And there's been an opportunity for years to address the map. And nobody wants to do it. So you'd have to forgive a citizen of the town, someone whose lot is affected, or someone who abuts this project from having some suspicions that a, a, as the EDC, they frequently cite in, in their I'm, I'm almost done. In their rationalizations for not addressing the map, it's, well, we don't want to deal with this now. And, you know, we might want to add on. You know, Mr. Anderson finally said, and this is now corroborated by Mr. Costa, that quote theoretically, talking about the folks who have fragments of property in the district, theoretically, they could do a lot split and sell that commercially-owned property to the abutter and kind of make some money off the sale of the back of their property and keep their residential on the front side. And so.
Mr. Miller, I'm, I'm trying to give you every opportunity to speak, but is, do you have a specific question for Attorney Costa? Your points are, are well heard.
The question is, I, I think Mr. Costa has, has answered it, that, that you could address the map. And what I'm, I want to urge And what I'm, I want to urge this board to address the map and bring it in line with what your publicly stated desires are about the downtown. Revitalize Main Street to give us a place where we can park our bikes and have an ice cream cone and all that kind of stuff, and maybe get a little housing uh, in there if there's a space for it. But not to make it a potential land grab, which is what it looks like to even the most casual observer.
Okay, thank you. And, and also, Mr. Miller, I'll just add that the, the map has been talked about. I know that, um, you know, we were trying to stick to the timeline for town meeting and is sitting in on some of those conversations as well. Not that there's not an urgency in getting this done, um, but I'm just trying to think how to say this.
And can you clarify for me that you, you're saying there's now not an urgency to deal with this? I, I.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that at all. I didn't say that at all. Um, you know.
I under, I understand. I mean, the EDC is, I mean, no one that listens to their meetings can.
We're not going to disparage. I'm sorry.
I'm not disparaging anybody. No, I'm, I'm trying to speak understandingly about them. They're under a lot of pressure and they didn't see this map thing uh, coming up quite the way that it has. So I'm sympathetic. They've got a problem, but the solution is not to ram it through. The solution is to take a last, you know, to take a step back, to do the hard work, to get a map that actually reflects what the publicly stated goals of this project are and then to move forward. And if you did so, you do it with my support. So thank you for your part.
Thank you. No, I, I appreciate that. And, um, you know, as we said, I had spoken to Julie Conley earlier from the EDC and we are going to put together a meeting with, um, I had seven lots. I'll, I'll double check 10 Newton. And you know, here with the homeowners on those lots, what, what their thought process is. And I think Attorney, Attorney Costa has given us some clarification that we didn't have as far as the amount of time and what would be involved in doing this. And I think he's given us some, some great options.
Lisa, can I just, and, and this is, this, you know, this is, this is born of not having the sort of experience that I suspect Mr. Costa does. But, um, i- if you, for instance, Mr. Costa, if you are the owner of a split lot in a district like this, I mean, there's almost a subtext that, 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 um, if you're an owner, you wouldn't want a split lot. Are there, are there reasons why someone with a split lot would be in fact in favor of keeping it that way?
So, um, Mr. Haley, it's a fair question and I can, I can give you sort of my general thoughts, but I'm not going to speak specifically to any of these properties. And it sort of goes back to something I said earlier on about the role that Judy Barrett has played in these proceedings and why it's important to have, whether it's an outside planning consultant or in-house expertise, it's important to have someone involved who has, um, a history with, with planning, uh, land, land use and planning and somebody who has some familiarity with the properties that are being zoned or rezoned. Um, and, and I say that because, um, to, to state in a vacuum that it does or doesn't uh, offer a benefit to a property owner to, to, to own a split lot or to retain a split lot is a difficult thing to do. Um, if I've got a 20 acre vacant parcel of property uh, in a, uh, in, in a community that is booming with respect to uh, industrial growth, and I've got a split lot that is partly in the industrial district and partly in an adjacent, uh, small business district, then certainly it's a, it's a significant benefit to me to have that industrially zoned land as a part of my property. And any split lot provision that extends the industrial zoning further into my property, it, it is a, is a, is a benefit, a substantial benefit, a monetary benefit even to me as a landowner. In this particular circumstance, is there a significant benefit? You know, I, I appreciate the, the, the risks that have just been summarized by, by the previous speaker. And, and I'm not, I'm not going to speak to them because I don't know, um, I, I don't know with the same degree of, uh, academic, uh, interest, uh, what, what he knows. It sounds like he's done his homework and he's concerned about these individual properties and, and the potential for redevelopment. But you know, I can tell you that in this sort of an environment, and again, speaking in a vacuum, but looking at the parcel sizes, looking at the configuration of these parcels, you know, I don't see this as, you know, a, 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 an incredible opportunity for a, you know, I think the term that was used is land grab. I'm not saying it can't happen. I'm just saying that I'm looking at parcels that are, you know, 375 to 400 feet in depth, 100 feet in width that are already developed. If you, if you look at 10, 12 and 14, and I understand that there are others beyond those. I focused on those because those are the ones that I was directed to is having their backyards or substantial portions, vacant portions of their backyards with potential frontage uh, on a, on a roadway within the DD district. Remember, the language of the, of section 174 dash five says, uh, where a district boundary line divides a lot existing at the time that the line is adopted, the regulations relating to the less restricted portion of such lot may extend not more than 30 feet into the more restricted portion, provided that the lot has frontage in the less restricted district. So, um, that's an additional, an additional caveat there, additional condition that needs to be satisfied. So I focused on those because I was directed to those. I was directed to the existence of Park Street, where it exists on the ground and where it could potentially be extended. There's even a question as to whether the potential extension would qualify a landowner to benefit from section 175, uh, 174 dash 5D, or whether the expectation in the language of that section is that the roadway would exist at the time that the split lot designation was created. So I don't see this circumstance as a, a, a re, as a significant risk for a land grab. But at the same time, I'm not able to say without a better understanding of the lay of the land and the value of these properties and, you know, are, are, are there, are there, is this all upland? Is, is part of it wetland? What's the condition of the property? Where are these buildings? I'm looking at, you know, a, a, a map here. There's not an aerial photograph. It's showing the approximate locations of buildings. It's GIS. I presume this is fully accurate, but is it accurate? Are there buildings, um, you know, in the exact locations that are shown here? Are there outbuildings that aren't captured? Um, what does that mean for future developability? So without doing that sort of an analysis, it's very difficult to say with certainty, you know, how great the risk is. It doesn't jump off the page of me the way that other zoning proposals and other communities have because of the configuration of these lots and how you would need to negotiate with multiple different landowners for irregular shaped portions of parcels. You'd have to make an argument that you could extend the designation 30 more feet into these parcels. To do that, you would need to extend an existing roadway because that roadway doesn't currently provide frontage for those portions of the parcels that are in the DD district. And that's just speaking to 10, 12 and 14. You deal with, when you get to 25, 25 is really irregularly shaped. You, you get to, um, 35 and 35 is split in an entirely different way. It does have the frontage on Boston Road, but the frontage itself is split. So this is not one of these circumstances where I have incredible concern, you know, even as an untrained planner, that there's a, there's a significant risk here. Again, with that said, I can't tell you that there's none. And if the simple solution is the property owners are supportive of removing these parcels from the district, let's do it, then again, it's not heavy lifting.
Lisa, uh, one more thing and then I, I, I promise I'll keep quiet and let other folks wait. And I see Mr. Wood has, has his hand up. And Lisa, I, all I want to say is I think your, your idea about, um, talking to the, to the actual owners of property, that would be, um, uh, in other words, you know, it sounds, um, and, and again, from a drafting standpoint, um, I, I certainly appreciate what Mr. Costa says, but I think the more important thing is, is the, the, the drafting in some respects is the easy part. The, the, the political with a small P is the difficult part. And it's entirely possible, we don't know, we don't know that right now. It's entirely possible that the people who actually own that land, you know, as we're, as, as it's being tossed out, redraw the map, maybe they don't want that map redrawn. Um, and, and, um, uh, I understand that abutters, um, you know, and I'm close to being in a butter, um, but abutters have, um, concerns as well. But, but the primary concern is to find out, um, the, from the landowners, the butters as well, but also the landowners and see what their view is, uh, because this map ended up the way it is for a reason. And it's entirely possible that folks who owned the land back in, what did somebody say, 1993? But there was, you know, there, there had to have been some reason to structure it this way. Maybe it wasn't a good reason, but there had to have been some reason, um, you know, we don't have good legislative history on where that reason came from. But, but we can update our information by finding out from the landowners themselves, what they think about, about, again, what, what, what sounds like an easy thing, let's just redraw the map. Maybe it isn't so nee, easy to the folks who would be directly affected by it.
Thank you, Marty. And, and I agree. And, and to, to Mr. Miller, um, obviously, y- you know, your, your concerns were heard and, um, working, the, the Board of Selectmen and EDC working together will speak to these homeowners and, you know, um, it'll stay on the radar as, as we move forward. So, um, that being said, if we could bring Mr. Mr. Wood over. John, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Do you need the map up or are you just going to speak?
No, I just have a, a, a quick question. Um, first off, uh, I, 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 I'm listening to you, Mr. Miller. I'm not discounting what you're saying at all and I want you to know that. But I do know, uh, on this, Sarah Hawker, the assistant planner, sent out a great timeline of, of the zoning map. And this is a question I'm, I'm going to be asking Mr. Costa, by the way. Hello, thank you for being here. I know back when they were looking at, uh, changing the zoning back with Zach in the mid 2000s and then as far as 2013, they had identified these split lots and they had potentially were going to do a change. Does anybody know why planning never enacted that? Is there, is there a bigger reason to keep this the way it is than changing it? Because I'm assuming if, if planning identified it as a problem back in 2013, looked at the lots, identified the split lots, the current chair was the chair then. So I'm assuming if it was a, an issue and it doesn't sound like changing this bylaw to the way it is now, to what we want to do, really affects those properties a whole lot more than it does now. So it, it, if, in my opinion, it needs to be changed, but not just because of this bylaw. It's got to be changed because it's been that way forever. So does anybody know why, is, is planning on or somebody that could tell me why it wasn't changed when they identified it before as split lots? And if it's a bigger challenge than, than we think, and that's why they didn't do it.
Okay, John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you pause there for a second. Sam, you were on Zach, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Do you want to? We're going to pull on your expertise.
Yeah. Uh, John, good question. Um, I actually don't have a, you know, highly specific answer, but my recollection is two things. One, I actually don't recall the split lot issue being a, uh, really active topic of conversation, particularly. It did come up and I think it's, it could well have been that there was a plan to do something about the map to deal with that. But I think the Zach process, uh, lost momentum for a variety of reasons. And I think, uh, once that became apparent to the planning board, that it was going to be very difficult to get the proposal approved by town meeting. I think it just sort of stalled. And a lot of things that probably were good ideas to do, including focusing on the split rock, split lots, fell by the wayside and it not enough again to, uh, uh, move forward on its own there. So to me, it was a sort of a package deal. Once the package was seen to be problematic, then it was less interest in focusing on specific pieces. But Don Morris might have a, a, a good memory of that as well, since he was chair of the planning board and, uh, um, involved in Zach heavily.
Yeah, because I thought I saw, um, uh, one of the maps that had come by and I thought it had a way to fix it by going to the, the, the property lines. And I can, I'm trying to find the email and, and which one it was.
Certainly, you know, it could have happened and I know there was discussion about that. I just don't remember that particular map.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And, and, um, like we said, this, this is something that, you know, we'll try to reach out to the homeowners this week and hopefully get something that we can even give a, a brief update at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting next Tuesday, if not sooner.
And but what, has anybody heard what planning wants to do on that map? What have, what's their position on, on, on that area right now? Do they think it needs to be changed? Have they taken a position on that?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know if, um.
No, and Lisa, I'll wait. And I mean, I, I, I saw a little bit of their meeting last night. I'm obviously don't want to speak for, for planning, but I would like to think that, that, um, a- again, I just think that there, there the solution is easy, once you agree on what you want the solution to be.
Yeah.
And it is, it is a more complicated issue than saying, let's just change the map. Ultimately, that may be the answer, but there are people whose, whose property rights are going to be impacted by this. And, um, um, that's why I go back to your idea about touching base, base with those property owners. Again, since, since I don't own a, a, a property with a split lot, I don't know what might go into the thinking about why, why I would want to maintain it that way. Maybe why I weighed in, in whether it was 2013 or 1993 or whenever it was first done. But I think it's important to, to, and I don't, I don't think there's been a knee jerk reaction by the planning board. I don't think they've taken a vote. Um, and I, I think the, the acquiring as much information as possible. But again, particularly from the folks who are going to be the most directly affected by this is pretty important.
Agreed.
All right. Is that it? Thank you, Mr. Woods. Um, while we're on this, is there anyone else that would, has a question on split lots? Or Attorney Cast, uh, Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you. Now I'll be quick. Uh, I, can you hear me?
Yep.
I, I just, I just want to clarify that the, the, the planning board, not in last night's meeting, but in the meeting pre, prior, previous to that, reached consensus and Mr. Morris instructed the EDC to very clearly, I think, look at the map, reexamine the map. You need to take up the map. You've got a problem with the map. And, and in the subsequent EDC meeting, they declined to do so and that's where it stands. So the, I mean, the planning board, I, this is what the comic opera aspect of this to me is that people, it's like people coming out and singing in different languages.
Well, Mr. Miller.
I'm just a citizen trying to make sense of it all and get a clear answer.
And I, I completely appreciate that. And I think we have a path going forward to, um, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen and the EDC will, will work together.
Somebody from the planning board here tonight, of course, the way you've got it set up, I can't see who's present, uh, and, and listening. But if a member of the planning board is here, I, I wish they would come forward and, and say, because they all seem to have a problem with the map.
Whether they do, were we looking at the problem now? So I, I don't know that it serves any purpose, honestly, to, to have them come and say, we want the map we looked at because we're already doing that. So.
I, thank you. I, the record will speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now we have lots of hands raised. Um, let's see. Um, Ms. Reynolds.
Looking for, are you looking for an order, um, Lisa? Because you've been, you've been handling multiple things. Claire was first, I think, Marnie then was second and Mr. Perry third.
Okay, so if we could bring Claire over first. Claire, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Welcome.
I don't have the little, oh, there we go. Okay. Um, thanks. Uh, Lisa, great job. You do not have a very easy job tonight. My question is, for those who did not get a chance to watch the planning board meeting last night, Mr. Miller's question was, who is responsible for the zoning map? And he asked that several different times. I think that if he hears, maybe if, um, Adam Costa can address that, hello, Adam, Claire Reynolds here, um, he will get an answer from a professional in terms of the, um, who handles it from the perspective of whose bailiwick it is. Now, he referenced the fact that at a previous planning board meeting, Don Morris instructed Julie Conley to go back and take a look at the zoning map. That is not an EDC function or responsibility. And that was not part of the initial directive that planning, Don Morris, gave to the EDC in April of two thousand and nineteen. And it's also on the Sam video, because I dug it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. All right, Mr. Healy, who did you say was second?
Ms. Houlihan.
Ms. Houlihan, okay. Good evening, Marty. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good. How about yourself?
I'm good. So I would, I am a Planning Board member, and I was there last night. I am probably the most nascent Planning Board member, so I'm not one to kind of speak on rules or who has the right. I think so. Mr. Miller has brought a very important situation up. And I think the Planning Board, it is, is an agreement that a solution needs to be provided. So Marty, I think you're right. Like, we would prefer a solution be provided. I think the, the clarity here is that this is a EDC and a Selectman zoning bylaw change. And so typically, what, what has, what has happened is Planning Board is kind of the body that needs to enforce the zoning if it gets approved. And so we're at the point now where we need to make sure that we understand the, the implications of the, the bylaw as it's written. And I think that's where we really do seek the clarity of a zoning solution. And I speak for myself, we haven't taken a vote on this, but I'm not comfortable supporting this until some sort of solution is brought forward. And the other thing I just wanted to speak to, Lisa, if I may, is my concern in the last draft is that the FAR.
Marty, we're gonna get to that. That's on the list.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then it was Mr. Perry, Lisa.
Okay, Mr. Perry. You are muted. You need to unmute David.
Yeah.
Now I can hear you. Welcome.
Okay, yeah, I just, just to, I am a city planner, or was, I'm retired. But, uh, so I'd just like to get, try and be helpful to you, or Lisa, with your, I think, good suggestion. And by the way, I also agree with the, Mr., whoever it was speaking about this. Get some resolution of this. So some parity. Can you pull up that map, please? The zoning map?
Absolutely. Yeah, hold on one second.
In detail with that, where you have those lots, ten, eleven, twelve, whatever it is, twelve.
Yeah, right here. Here's ten, here's eleven, and here's fourteen.
Okay, well, if you look at, there's an important provision in the zone. But by the way, the, the yellow area is zone RB, which is half-acre lots.
Correct.
And there is another provision in the ordinance, which is very, very important, which states, quote, hold on a second. It's worth the effect of that there shall only be one principal permitted use on any one lot. That, that, that's, that's also, by the way, you, you're also recommending that be included in this downtown business district. What, so what that means, if you look at lot ten, for instance, just as an example, if lot ten was, was to want to use the back purple, the business area, he, he would have to draw a line, providing at least one half acre for the house, number ten. And then the remainder would, could be used on a separate lot for business use. I just wanted to get, you know, some clarity on that, so people understand that you can't do it on one lot. There has to be a, a new lot line drawn. Okay, Mr. Costa? He's gone.
Nope, he'll be there.
No, he's. I, I assume you, because you didn't, you didn't mention that, but it's very important. There must be a new lot line dividing the half acre from the remainder.
Is that a question, David?
No, 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 I just wanted to be, make it clear. So when you're discussing it with the abutters, they understand more clearly what it is they would have to do if they wish to do X and Y. That's all.
Okay. Great, thank you, David. All right, is there any other questions on split lot? I think we, we have a path moving forward and, and talking to the abutters. So clearly, there'll be more on this going forward. So, Mr. Stivers, would you like to go to your second question?
That was my easy one. Second one is just a consistency issue in terms of the trigger for the Planning Board review, which is, I think, three thousand square feet in the current draft. And in the underlying by, zoning bylaw, that trigger is two thousand square feet. And it seems to me that having those consistent is useful, and I would be in favor of two thousand square feet for everything to, again, be consistent with the existing by, by law. And again, provide a little more focus on review by the Planning Board for these projects to deal with some of the concerns we've heard from the abutters here in terms of what might be built there. So to me, that's a consistency issue. But, you know, again, happy to hear your discussion about it.
Okay. Adam, do you have anything to add to that, or?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think I've got probably a lot to add, but I, I don't want it necessarily complicated. I mean, this is ultimately a matter for the discretion of the decision-makers, which for, for tonight's purposes are all of you. And eventually will fall into the hands of, you know, the, the, the Planning Board, conducting a public hearing and making a report and recommendation to town meeting. And then even more ultimately than that, will be a decision for town meetinggoers as to whether they, they vote the zoning up or down. So, you know, who am I to say sitting here that the threshold should be a thousand square feet, two thousand square feet, three thousand square feet? So I, I don't have much to say on the discretionary question of where that threshold should be. I do know that the thought behind establishing a higher threshold, to go back to something I made mention of a bit earlier, was to incentivize development by allowing for larger development. And I say that in a relative sense. So we're not talking large development by any means, but larger development, two thousand, twenty-two hundred, twenty-five hundred square feet to proceed in a manner where it wouldn't be subject to that sort of discretionary special permit type review. So with all that said, the, the one, the one point I will make, because it's a, it's an important nuance, and it's something frankly that even when I first gave a quick read-through to Judy Barrett's version of the zoning, I didn't catch on to. And I, I, that's reflected to some extent in my remarks, where I said, you know, there are these different thresholds, two thousand versus three thousand square feet, that, that, there is some inconsistency there. There doesn't need to be consistency, but it does provide a bit of a gap between something that requires major site plan review, but not in the form of a discretionary special permit between, between two thousand and three thousand square feet. Judy Barrett's point to me and to several of us who participated in a call a number of weeks ago is that it, it's, it's even different than that. And I'm gonna, I actually just pulled up her email, something she sent to, to Julie and Lisa and me. This is just, when was this, a week or so ago? In anticipation of, of tonight's forum, where she didn't remark on much, except called out specifically this square foot, square footage threshold for special permits. And here's, I'm just gonna read from her email. I don't think she would mind me doing this. The only thing I continue to be very concerned about is that the Planning Board, Planning Department slash Board interpret the existing two thousand square foot special permit requirement in the Business Village as applying to the size of a proposed structure. And the word "structure" is italicized, because she's emphasizing it. But that is not how the thresholds in the proposed downtown district work. Speaking of the, the draft zoning, in the latter, meaning the DD bylaw, the thresholds are about the size of tenant spaces. And there is a very specific reason for that. So she goes on to say, if a two thousand square foot special permit threshold is imposed on everything in the downtown district, the issues that town experiments, experienced with the mixed-use building recently could happen again. So her, her point is that she's distinguishing between a, a, a threshold for purposes of a building, an establishment, a site, as opposed to a threshold for a specific use. If you apply the thresholds to the use, you could have a single structure, a single, you know, quote-unquote, project that has three separate uses, each use being nineteen hundred square feet, each of which would fall under that threshold. So frankly, whether you choose to go with the three, the, the two thousand square foot threshold or the three thousand square foot threshold, you do need to recognize the difference between applying that threshold to area of disturbance, building area, project area, as opposed to use by use, because you could have multiple uses in the same building. The building's, you know, fifty, fifty-seven hundred square feet, but you've got a nineteen hundred square foot tenant, nineteen hundred square foot tenant, and a nineteen hundred square foot tenant. So that's, that, that's the extent of my initial comments. I'm happy to answer further questions about it. But it's a point that, again, it was lost on me when I first read through things quickly. But as I read them more clearly and had a couple of conversations with Judy in a meeting with, with some of you, that's something that she has really driven home, that you, you need to be mindful of that nuance.
Lisa, can I just follow up on that? I am, I am guessing, or assuming, I guess, that, that the reason Ms. Barrett is stressing that is because what we, not individually, although somewhat individually, but drawing on the various surveys, the master plans, et cetera, have stressed is that we're looking for a path to mixed use. And it sounds to me like what you've described, her describing, is an appropriate path to mixed use. Whereas if you don't approach it that way, you could be limiting your ability to do that. Do I have that right?
I think that's right. I think it certainly puts an emphasis. I mean, that, that's a, that's a theme throughout the bylaw, that there is an emphasis on creating opportunities for mixed use. You know, mixed-use development that, that includes any use requiring a special permit requires a special permit. So, and that's how, that's, that's how it's currently structured. So while it's true that it incentivizes mixed use, it also subjects more mixed-use projects to special permits as opposed to mixed use that might be available by right with site plan review, but not a special permit discretionary review by the Planning Board.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you. And again, I'm still waffling on, you know, the degree of control that one ought to have there as far as review by the Planning Board. But I appreciate that point. And if we do keep the same language, I think it's worth making that more clear than the language now reads, as a matter of fact. So that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Chelsea Bryant? Ms. Conley has her hand raised. Hi, Julie.
Hey, Lisa. Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking my comment. I, I just want to add to Sam, clarify for Sam's point. Sam, I, I just want to make sure you're talking about the, the three thousand square foot per establishment limit as, as noted in one seventy-four dash eight point twelve B. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are two sections that have three thousand feet in them.
Okay. So I, I just want to clarify for that section that, that three thousand square foot limit is limited to those four enumerated uses that we've identified as, as uses that we're looking to attract. So that's retail sales and services, ice cream sandwich candy shops, specialty food shop, no drive-throughs, obviously, restaurants with indoor and outdoor seating, personal services like barber shop, beauty salon, tailor, shoe repair. So, and again, I, I'm, I, I'm just putting this out there, you know, as to, I, I don't know what the right number is. And I'd like to maybe spend a little time thinking about. So I would assume from looking at that list, maybe a restaurant, for example, might be the, the one that, you know, might be one of the, you know, bigger potentially, square-footage-wise uses that, that might be required. So just spending a little time thinking, you know, is two thousand square feet enough for somebody who's looking to put in a restaurant? Or, you know, should it be three thousand, or should it be somewhere in between? You know, if we're truly trying to incentivize these specific uses, you know, I just want to make sure we're not cutting in too much at, at every turn, you know. With, our, our, our scope here is to bring in development, but in a controlled, specific manner, where we're, you know, we're sort of driving the bus on it, saying these are the uses we're looking to encourage. So I'm, I just, I'm only hesitant. And again, this is without having done enough research on the specific point as to what a developer looking to put in, say, a restaurant would need. I, I don't want to, I, I want to make sure we're not stunting that too much by putting in overly restrictive square footage requirements or limits. So that's my comment.
Thanks. I understand the distinction there, too. Thank you. But I have confidence that the Planning Board can sort that out reasonably. But I know different people have different views on these.
Is there any other questions from the public on that specific point? I see none. Okay, Mr. Stivers.
Okay, I'm not gonna spend time on several of the smaller points I had. But the next, the only other big one for me is the eighty percent lot coverage figure. And my concern there is that that apparently replaced the FAR, the floor area ratio approach that we'd had in prior drafts. I think that opens the door to some pretty substantial development. And if you've got a twenty thousand square foot lot, which is not quite half an acre, and eighty percent coverage is a sixteen thousand foot, square foot building. If you've got by right, in, in terms of the current thing, three floors allowed, that gives you three times sixteen thousand, or forty-eight thousand feet. If you go with special permit to four floors in that building, that's sixty-four thousand square foot building on a twenty thousand square foot block, which to me is substantial overdevelopment. So it seems to me that similarly, the FARs, I was never really happy with, because that can limit somebody, if you've got a ten thousand, a twenty thousand square foot lot with a, let's say, point three five is where we started at one point for the FAR. That would, twenty thousand times point three five is seven thousand square feet in a building there. But if you've got a three-story building, that's, you know, two thousand square feet plus per floor on that. So again, I think that one probably is too restrictive for somebody who might want to build there. It seems to me that a more practical approach might be a lot coverage amount. So to take the footprint of whatever structure you build and say the, the, limit it to, let's say, something like point two or maybe thereabouts of the lot coverage, then you could actually build up reasonably. And I, I have not done a huge amount of analysis on the square footage example. But it seems to me that's a more practical approach to look at the square footage of the footprint, if you will, of the building, regardless of how many stories it is. And make that in the range of like point two or point two-five to point five by special permit or whatever. I think there are numbers there that work better for things that prohibit huge buildings, but yet give more flexibility to somebody who's, you know, willing to build on a relatively, you know, smaller footprint there. So anyway, my initial thoughts, again, I'm open to discussion of different ways to do it. That may not be the only other way. But I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the eighty percent lot coverage and not real happy with the FARs that have been provided previously.
Sam, thank you. So I can just tell you that the point eight oh was, was not agreed upon. It was just a number that Judy had plugged in there. I spoke to her briefly about that earlier today. And because my, my question is, I think one of the challenges we've faced as we've gone through this, and even with the FAR, is increasing the FAR enough to be able to build up. And I think that's been one of the challenges. So I think, Sam, I was kind of, myself, thinking somewhat along the same lines as you. I was thinking if we would put the, make the eighty percent, say, a thirty-five percent coverage, that would allow the twenty percent green space, it would allow some amount for parking. But as you said, on a ten thousand square foot lot, that would allow thirty-five hundred square foot building. And then you could go up, and you could build on, on that. So unless I'm thinking about this completely wrong, that would allow a ten thousand square foot building on, and only utilizing point three five of the coverage area of the lot. So I, I think there's a way to do this. I mean, again, that was just something I had written down off the top of my head that seemed to make some sense. And, and again, trying to accomplish the, the, being able to go a three-story. And that seemed to be one of the ways that obviously made a little bit of sense to me. So the eighty percent, again, is just a number that, that Judy put in. It wasn't that anybody agreed to that, or that specific number was discussed. It was not. It was just.
Lisa, Mr. Costa's been pretty good about, about giving us pluses and. Lisa, Mr. Costa's been pretty good about about giving us pluses and minuses for for different things. Um, I mean, the the um I can see the disadvantage of a of a of an incredibly small footprint, that then you're building a silo instead of a building. Um, and so, Mr. Costa, if it's if, what what are the um and again, I'm not asking you to take a position, but what are the pluses and minuses of of going with a a a point eight of the lot versus going as far as point three or point three five? What what's the uh, you know, what are the inevitable consequences that are going to flow from things like that?
Um, sure. So I mean, part of the challenge with these um these floor area ratios or or really lot coverage more than that is, you know, it it's it's successful if you've got a sort of homogeneous district with uh parcels that are similar in size, uh mostly developed or mostly undeveloped. Um, it works well. I've 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 worked with floor area ratios in uh, you know, true downtown redevelopment districts where you've got a pre-developed downtown area. They're looking to encourage redevelopment. Uh, the 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 acquisition of existing structures and either reconstruction or refurbishing the structure, renovating the structure, building up using the existing footprint as a base. And sometimes floor area ratios work well if the parcels are of a similar size throughout the the limited district that you're designating. When you've got a district that has some small lots, some medium-sized lots, a few larger lots, and you try to apply these standards, you run the risk that you're describing here. And I I'm I'm talking a little bit outside of my bailiwick here because I'm not, I'm not a trained planner. I'm a, I'm a land use lawyer. So um I I typically would work cooperatively with your planner, whether that's Judy or whatever other consultant you might have as a municipality. And I'd look to them and say, well, what do you know about the district? What sort of an analysis have you done of the parcels on the district? And then what are the ancillary needs associated with the proposed uses? I gave you the example of Methuen a little bit earlier, and I talked about how they had a need for greater uh better walkability of their of their uh Methuen Square. They had a need for greater parking. And so they wanted to work into their development plan, their vision for the downtown area uh available parking, off-street parking in addition to on-street parking. They wanted to 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 provide for better connectivity. They have sort of a a a river that runs through the downtown area. The downtown's very hilly. They wanted to provide opportunities on lots for that connectivity. And so when you consider that, that's going to have an effect on your lot coverage because you want the ability to provide for those set-asides for parking or for open space or for gathering areas or walking trails or whatnot. Um, so there there's no, there's no absolute right answer here. The com- the the discussion that we had, a comment that was made by a few people that participated in, and I forget who who everybody was, but we had a meeting, what, four or five weeks ago with Judy. It was a Zoom call like this, if I remember. Uh, and we talked about floor area ratio and um the the consensus was that there has definitely been a move. Um, and I I I see it in, I see it in Massachusetts. I don't do work uh much outside of New England, so I don't know if it if it's something that is occurring in other states, too, but a move away from the concept of floor area ratio. Um, I think that it works in certain limited circumstances, but in many others, you get kind of uh again, that sort of hodgepodge of development. In some locations, you get uh very tall structures on limited footprints. In other locations, you get um a significant portion of the the a a a larger lot develops, so a large lot coverage, um but but it doesn't go quite as high. So um if that's not how you want the development pattern to look, if that's not the aesthetic that you want for your downtown district, I think you've got to look away from floor area ratio and look to something like a more limited lot coverage uh in conjunction with the other protections you have. If you have height limitations, if you've got story limitations, if you've got minimum setbacks, then those in conjunction with lot coverage can provide for the protections that you need. Um, I I I thought it was interesting um uh th- this concept, uh Mr. Stivers, of building footprint ratio, which is not something that I've really seen used. I wonder if Judy's seen it seen it used and in other in other communities. It's a little different than uh lot coverage. Um, but again, I don't I don't know. I don't I don't know what the downfall of that may be because I don't have any experience with it, but minimally, I think you could reduce the eighty percent lot coverage to something more workable um and eliminate the FAR.
Great. Thank you.
You did, Lisa.
Sorry, Sam. Thank you. Um, any other questions from members of the board or the public on this? Um, I will reach out to Judy and um share some of the concerns, Sam, as as well as the the approach, the other approach that you mentioned. And um I'll come back and update the board with Judy's thoughts. And and again, I just want to be clarified. No one agreed to an eighty percent. It was just a number that she had plugged in. So
Got my attention.
That got my attention, too. Honestly, when I saw it. So um that being said, um, Lisa, you have a hand up. Oh, excuse me.
Hey, Hockenson. Yeah.
Okay, if we can bring him over, please.
Um, yeah, I I had spoken to David Perry earlier, and he wasn't seeming to rep- respond to this. And um I think we were talking about, you know, you're trying to get development happening in the the town center proper. But this being the entire business zone, it covers the whole thing. So if eleven Main Street were ever to redevelop, which you're allowing it to do now by changing these rules, it could be potentially four stories tall. Right now, it's 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 two stories, and I don't think that there's anything else in downtown that's two stories uh beyond two stories. Uh, I think that on the idea of the 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 lot size dictating how tall the building goes, I I think you're proposing chaos as a, as an organized structure in the downtown village district with three and four-story buildings right downtown, when there's nothing like that in the neighborhood. I think you're really changing the character of the village district. If you're really going to allow three and four-story buildings. And it, and I think David's other point was that the um lot that was um on the corner of Maine and Newton Street, a lot of the, I think it was two stories, and a lot of people complained it was too tall. That the size of the building is too tall. And in part, that was one of the objections to it not being, it not going forward. So I think some of these numbers that I'm hearing is to how tall things can get and the potential air- area of of the building. I just look at the potential for what might happen should eleven Main Street ever get rebuilt. It's a huge lot. It it could really eat into that parking. I I guess the other concern would be all the setbacks, but I just hear these numbers and just saying like, oh, you know, large percentage of this space and three-story building. You are really altering the character of Southborough itself. And I don't think you rarely get four-story buildings, even on Route nine.
Mr. Hockenson, thank you very much. And and a four-story building would require a special permit by the uh planning board. And obviously, they're pretty cognizant of of the the districts as um and what's allowed in the districts. And um I'm just trying to find out here real quick. I should have pulled this up sooner. With with the current zoning, um, I thought the current zoning allowed two and a half or three stories already. Um, I'm just trying to pull this up here real quick. And actually, is it two and a half? That's what I was thinking, Sam. So.
What's the maximum height? Because, you know, I I guess I'm still, I can imagine two and a half being the description of what's at the eleven Main Street. I'll call it a strip mall. And I I I'm just concerned about changing really sort of the 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 village scape, if you wish, with, you know, just tall buildings sitting right in the middle of a small little village. Just my comment. Okay. I if David wants to pick up from that because he had a lot more details, I'll just say I've 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 had my say there. I'm just concerned that it's uncharacteristic of a village.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Hockenson. Appreciate you taking the time and coming tonight. All right, I see no other hands raised. Business Village, excuse me for one second. I'm just trying to scan through quick and see what the.
There are two hands that are now raised, Lisa.
Okay, wow. Mr. Perry is one and I only see one.
Uh, Julie.
Julie coming. All right. So uh let's go Julie first and then David.
Thank you. Um, I just, I just want to um point out that historically, there have been taller buildings on Main Street in Southborough, the the um the Arms Building. There was a school that I believe was four stories. Um, you know, the the piece that hasn't been discussed tonight is that um one of the parts of this proposed bylaw includes um design guidelines, which would be promulgated by the planning board. So that's, that's where we would sort of control the design aspects for it. We are certainly very, very cognizant of of wanting to make sure we maintain um a a village feel, the historic um piece of our town. Um, you know, that that small-town feel um and that that's certainly from the get-go has been our priority and what we're looking at. And those are the messages that we conveyed to both Judy Barrett and Adam Costa, when we talked about, you know, how do we do this in a way that promotes our goals of bringing in some small businesses while also promoting a little bit of diversity in housing. Um, but keeps that feel uh and and kind of gives it just a little bit of revitalization. Um, thinking about and looking at, you know, where we've been historically and where we are now. So uh, you know, that is not, it does not new to have buildings that are potentially three feet tall, uh three stories tall. And again, um, anything over that would would go uh for a special permit uh by the planning board.
Great. Thanks, Julie. And I'll just add that um under the current Business Village District, the maximum height is three stories, thirty-five feet. So I just wanted to include that. Thank you, Julie. And Mr. Perry. David, are you there?
Okay, good. Okay, let's deal with some details on this. This is a very important issue. By the way, I'm totally relieved to hear that the eighty percent was a sort of number no one ever thought of just but thought to put it in the document. You know, that really upsets people. Unnecessarily. And I'm glad to hear that that's sort of a meaningless number because it's ridiculous. That's that level of density. Now, height, height is really critical. You you endless times I've heard people presenting, we want to maintain a small-scale village atmosphere. At the same time, you want to incentivize development. So what is appropriate in height? Now, the the current rules are thirty-five feet and three stories in the Business Village District. Okay, the proposed rule is forty feet and three stories. Ask you why? Why forty feet and three? Uh, and you know, we kept the three stories. What's, what's wrong with thirty-five feet? Let's look at some buildings and see how high they are. Eleven Main is thirty-two feet. That's a two-story building with a with a sort of um mansard-type roof. Thirty-two feet, it's two stories, thirty-two feet. The building on the corner of Newton and East Main Street, which was proposed but denied by the planning board, was thirty feet. Thirty feet, two stories. It was rejected because the neighborhood thought it was too tall. Why? Because opposite, there are single-story buildings. You know, the the neighborhood, the downtown district is predominantly single-story. And there are one or two, eleven Main, the professional office building, is two. I found the biggest development is two stories. Thirty, that's, that's thirty-two feet. That's under thirty-five feet. And then I go into again, the the recent proposal was denied on the corner of Newton and East Main. I thought it was quite nice, but it was denied because it was too tall. So why on earth would you propose a zoning change allowing to increase to forty feet? You're just going to get people coming out of the woodwork here because you're just increasing the height unnecessarily, in my opinion. You're like, you've got three stories. You can perfectly well fit three stories in thirty-five feet. Now, let's look at the other subsection. By the way, Lisa, why don't you pull up this section in the in the ordinance? It's sort of whatever the page is. It's a it's height, it's it's paragraph eight. And then there's another a paragraph G. Get those two on the same sheet so people can see this. Because in, I bet you most people haven't really read this stuff. And I frankly didn't until like yesterday, when I had some problems from other people. Read it really carefully and think what we're, what we're trying to do here. Now, maximum, where's the height? Yes, there we are. Forty feet. See eight? Forty feet, three stories. The present rule is thirty-five feet and thirty-five feet, in my opinion, is perfectly adequate. It isn't exceeded by any building down there, including the largest one on eleven Main Street, the professional building, which is thirty, which is thirty-two feet. So forty feet is more than you need, is unnecessary. And let's go to this, and even worse, is B. Special permit for height increase. The planning board may grant a special permit to increase the maximum building height to forty-eight feet and four stories, provided that the minimum was setback, et cetera. I mean, what are we doing here? You're not even allowed four stories on on Route nine. And here you're going to allow four stories downtown, where most of the buildings are just one-story high? It's, it's just ridiculous. They're way out of scale. If if Mr. Beamers had come in with a four-story building in a proposal, he would have been laughed out of town. As it was, it was, he came in with something reasonable, and he was even rejected then. So I just ask some sort of you know, sane approach to to the maintaining character. Character is governed by building height and density, but particularly building height, and it's not necessary to increase building height. I think you should leave the building height as it is, thirty-five feet and three stories, and you should delete entirely paragraph G. Do not ask the planning board, you know, encourage people to apply for permits, which are just inappropriate at four stories high. Not appropriate. Thank you. I just want to get that off my chest. I feel strongly about it. You're getting, it's just unnecessary. It's gonna, you want to get it approved, you know? Make it approved, make it small scale, as you're talking about. Walkable, small scale. That's not forty feet and four stories, forty-eight feet and four stories. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So I I will just add to that as well that that um those discussions didn't take place in a silo. We had a a couple of different joint meetings uh that included planning board, economic development, SHOPC. Um plant, planning board, yeah, Board of Selectmen. So as well as comments were offered um from other boards and committees. Um, and this, this was at the November twenty-fourth meeting. This was a consensus uh agreed to by members of of the Board of Selectmen, by um members of the planning board. Um, so um I just want to say that this wasn't done in a silo, David, and I don't think anybody, everybody's on board with small-scale development as well. You know, that's what we're looking for in downtown, something that fits. So this just gives additional opportunities as well as the opportunity to put some diversity of housing downtown, which again is is your foot traffic, which will help all of the businesses and and make it a more vibrant um a more vibrant downtown.
Lisa, can I, I I again, I'd like to touch base with Mr. Costa. And again, not asking you to take a position on whether or not, you know, um uh one story, two stories, four stories, whatever, is the, is a is 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 an appropriate number. But what are the, in other words, what are the pluses and minuses from a and I don't even want to say from a development standpoint, but even for a, for a, for a um a village feel standpoint to doing um uh, you know, a thirty-foot limit, a thirty-five-foot limit, a forty-foot limit. What are, what are, there's always pluses and minuses. What are they if you're able to articulate them? Um, you know, uh off, sort of off the top of your head.
Well, I'll 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 do the best I can. It, again, this is one of these questions. It's sort of somewhat more in the bailiwick of Judy Barrett or or another uh municipal planner than than me. But you know, with that said, I think that it it goes to what your short and long-term objectives are for a downtown area. And I I'd say one of the pluses of allowing for greater density, and it's not for everyone because it has a different feel. It has a different aesthetic when you allow four-story buildings versus allowing two-story buildings, much like it would have a different aesthetic if you allow six or seven-story buildings as opposed to three or four-story buildings. Um, but when you allow for greater density and you allow for uh applicants, landowners, developers to build up, uh particularly in a in 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 a mixed-use uh um district, it provides opportunity to create that first-floor retail, that first-floor commercial component that you want and provides for a greater density of housing above. And the benefit, of course, with the housing and just to allude to something I said a bit earlier, once again, the Methuen example, um because there was so much packed into that one uh instance of rezoning. They wanted to bring people downtown. They wanted to bring people into Methuen Center. They still do. It's it's only, it's only been in effect for a few years, and they recognized it was going to be a a decades-long process, but they wanted to bring people. process, but they wanted to bring people downtown so that they could support these mom-and-pop businesses, because, you know, you, you, you don't have, I, I sort of liken it to, you know, the, the new concept of the, 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 the shopping mall in the twenty-twenty's, right? I mean, shopping malls are not what they used to be, they're now destination locations. You've got older defunct shopping malls that are being developed into, this of course is pre-COVID, um, being developed into these, um, sort of mult, multi, um, multi-use, uh, development projects, where you've got, yes, you've got the, the shopping mall with the traditional, you know, anchor or two, and some of the smaller stores. But you've also got, you know, a Dave and Buster's, or, uh, an equivalent arcade, a go-to location bowling alley. You've got, uh, residential housing that might be on the same premise, or even connected, uh, to the, to the other uses. So, in a similar sense, when you've got a downtown area, when you can bring more folks downtown, more patrons for these businesses, um, they're gonna, they're gonna leave their, 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 uh, one or two-bedroom condominiums, apartments, they're gonna go to, um, the, the mom-and-pop shops that are opening in the downtown area, they're gonna frequent the restaurants in the downtown area, and that's going to provide for a livelier environment. And the greater density you can provide, the greater the opportunities are for the creation of that housing. But again, it's not, that's, that's, that's one perspective on it. But it's not for everyone, it does, it does mean that you have a different aesthetic, a different feel to your downtown. Particularly, if, if, you know, one property falls, another falls, another, and then you, you, you get this, um, you get this corridor of uses that um, is very different, it's going to look very different than smaller-scale, one- or two-story development, or even three-story development, if you've got, you know, four-story building after four-story building after four-story building, each of which is, you know, forty, forty or forty-two feet high.
Is it, does it, does it follow from what you said, that it, that if one of, one of your, focuses, one of your hopes, is that you are able to, uh, generate, um, additional housing in a downtown area? And, and different housing that you have on one, two, whatever acre lots? That you are limiting your ability to do that? The, uh, if, if you are limited to, for instance, a two-story buil, story building as opposed to a three-story building?
I think in, in that instance, two versus three, that's probably correct. I mean, you, you can, you can always, to some extent, say you're limiting it. You could say, you know, three versus four, you're limiting it, four versus five, you're limiting it, five versus six, and so on and so forth. So, at some point, you do have to draw the line and say, well, that's not consistent with the character of the downtown as we, as we envision it in five years, in ten years, and in twenty-five years, so. Um, but I agree, when you're doing the comparison between twos and threes, I mean, if you've got two-story buildings, and your, your expectation is that you're going to have first-floor retail uses, first-floor non-residential uses, you've only got one level of housing above those, those uses, and with the limited footprints you've got on a lot of these properties, you're not going to get much house.
Great, again, thanks.
Lisa?
Go ahead, Sam.
Can I offer a little context for Mr. Perry's point? I don't want to debate the height issue, but I think, as I recall, one of the issues around height was to provide the opportunity for higher ceilings on first floor for business activity. So you get a little bump in height overall, but you've got the opportunity for a business to go in there and have, you know, high ceilings, a little more spacious look and feel for that kind of maybe retail space or other space on the first floor of the building. So I think that that was one of the considerations. Uh, not necessarily right or wrong, but I think that's part of the background for, for that particular proposal.
Thank you, Sam. And Mr. Perry? No, this is him, I don't know why it just came up and said it was raised, it's not now, okay. Okay. Thank you, Annie, oh, now it's raised again. Mr. Perry?
Want to respond, just responding to this, uh, this comment, because it's an interesting comment. No, it has nothing to do with the height on the first floor. You, how do you get a building of thirty-two feet high? You can have twelve feet, ten and ten. Right, there's three stories, and it's thirty-two feet. And it's a twelve-foot first floor. And you have twelve feet, by the way, in yours, in your ordinance here. About twelve feet being the minimum height on the ground floor. So there you are, you can do it, thirty, thirty-two feet, you can certainly do it in thirty-five feet, you don't need forty feet, Sam. Okay, just explain that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right. So, Sam, that was pretty much the extent of the comments you had.
I won't, I won't take time for the rest of them, they're smaller, so I'll follow up later, thank you.
That's fine. Uh, anyone else on the board have any additional questions? Okay, then we'll open it up to, anyone from the public who has a question that may not have already been answered? You see, Ms. Jones made a comment, Mr. Perry's comments in this discussion helps highlight an overarching issue that may be disparity on vision. What is being pitched, small-scale landscape, but allowing for four-story buildings revitalizing Main Street, but allowing for potential development? A quarter mile down Park, something to consider. All right, thank you. Are there any other hands raised, any other comments? If not, then, uh, on behalf of the Board of the Selectmen, we thank everybody for coming out tonight. We appreciate the discussion and the debate that took place tonight. And, um, a special thank you to Attorney Costa for making yourself available to us. I know you've had a busy day, it's, it's greatly appreciated. And, um, you know, we still have time to, to continue the discussions, I've got some things I'll go back to Judy Barrett and ask questions with. And, um, you know, we'll continue the discussion, and you know, we'll, we'll get the best, the best solution for revitalizing our downtown, um, that we can do. So if anyone has anything further to add?
Do you have one other hand raised?
Oh, sorry. Missed that, thank you, Vanessa.
Hi, it's Ray Hokinson again, uh, Ten Main Street. Uh, I guess I didn't identify myself before. I guess the one thing that I see here is it's, uh, there seems, this EDC approach of just zoning, with the concept that zoning, and they will come, seems to be just sort of a, a piecemeal approach, and what we all agree, we all agree, I'm sure, that the village needs a lot more. And I, I looked sort of at the Main Street project that occurred, which for the longest time, I looked at it as a, as an asphalt project. Because that seemed to be all that anybody was concerned for, the people that were driving the issue. All that they were concerned about was the road and the sidewalks, period. And it was the Main Street Working Group that sort of came together and put some balance and structure to it, softened some of the issues, and I think what we got for Main Street is pretty reasonable. Uh, it's not perfect, but it's a pretty reasonable, reasonably nice-looking street these days. So I, I think that the, the concept of balance is key. Mr. Costa said, uh, that developers want a degree of certainty. And I understand that. But I'm a resident of the village, and I'd like to feel a degree of certainty. And so, one of my thoughts is to provide better balance, is that as we're focused on development, that we also focus on preservation. And I would like to see the effort that, um, was recently pushed by, um, Kate Mattson. And, uh, she had great success in pushing the, the National Register Historic District. And I'd like to see that as an opportunity to reassure the residents that we value that side of things. And that I think it would be a nice, uh, addition to the concept of revitalizing the Village Center, improving the development, but also reassuring the residents, and reassuring the rest of the village and the rest of the town, that we value that his, historic character. So many other towns, Westborough is used as an example by EDC of, of what we'd like to be. Well, S, Westborough has four or five regional, uh, National Register Historic Districts, and so I really think that we're missing an opportunity if we don't tie a few things together. And, you know, I guess the, the, the other mechanics is, is, obviously is, none of this development can occur until somebody solves the septic issues downtown as well. And these all seem to be, uh, backburner, well, we'll push that off, we won't deal with it. So I think the key thing about developing and improving the character of the Village Center is it the balance of several, many, so, many issues. And it's key that we address all of those issues, and not just zone it and they will come.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Conley, can we bring Julie over? And Marty, I will just say, as a member of the, the Main Street Working Group, uh, you did do a great job.
I'm offended that Mr. Hokinson didn't say it was perfect.
Hi, Julie. Hi, again, um, and I don't want to take up more time, um, but I do want to, um, address Mr. Hokinson's return, uh, concern about balance, and when we started, and I know we've been very focused on zoning right now, obviously, that, um, we've had more meetings than I can count, um, specifically about the zoning issue. However, I, I just want to give a little bit of context about where that came from. Um, because we, we had, this, this came from a place of balance. Um, when we started talking about revitalizing the downtown three years ago now, we weren't talking about zoning, we were talking about how do we make the downtown bigger, better, sorry, not bigger. How do we make the downtown better? Um, what kinds of things are we looking for? And we've talked about things from not only preservation, but connectivity, walkability, beautification, um, you know, benches, green space, bike racks, these are all things that have been part of the conversation from the beginning. Um, when we engaged the ULI, the Urban Land Institute, to do a study and help us, you know, where, kind of identify where to start. You know, they said that the two sort of infrastructural pieces, be, um, to making, um, small improvements were the very antiquated zoning bylaw, um, and the lack of wastewater infrastructure. So those are sort of the building blocks, that's the foundation to the other pieces. We're still working on the other pieces, we perceive grants to do some beautification work. Those are still very much on our mind, but it, we, that doesn't, that's a Band-Aid until we fix the infrastructural issues being the zoning bylaw and the wastewater management. We are also moving forward on the wastewater management piece, I know that hasn't been the focus of today, because we're talking specifically about the zoning bylaw. But just because we're focused on this piece right now, it's because it's one of the foundational pieces, it's not, I, I, I don't want people to, to take that out of context and think that that's the only thing we're doing, this is not a, if they build it, they will come approach at all. We've been speaking about those other elements and how to build a community, a space for, that people want to come. And this is just one of the pieces that we need to get there. But certainly, all of those other pieces, historical preservation, we have met with them, we will continue to talk to them. I'm fully in support of the idea of, of, of making a specific historic, um, you know, designated area. So I, I just wanted to, to, to make sure that that piece didn't get lost. This is, this is not the only thing we're hyper-focused on, and this is a not, like, we think this is going to solve everything. We know that's not the case, we're looking for a place that will make our community proud, that we'll be able to gather and come to.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Uh, Mr. Miller? You are muted?
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, I, I just, I, I'm, I'm sorry to extend this meeting another second, but I, I have to, I have to weigh in, um, with thanks for what, what I found, the, the very eloquent statement by Mr. Hokinson, calling for some kind of balance. I mean, I, I, I share the same perspective, that the focus throughout this process has been on reassuring developers that they can have their way, once they meet certain, you know, once they sort of, uh, satisfy the wish list that's being laid out, that they'll have the buy-right, um, opportunity to build as they please. And Mr. Hokinson is absolutely right, that there's much more at stake here. And, um, I, I really hope that'll be followed. You know, the, the, the packet that the EDC Downtown Initiative, the, the packet that on this subject that was distributed to a Butters uh, in January, you know, notes on page nine, that the purpose for the proposed zoning article in item seven is to quote, "permit uses that promote conversion of existing buildings in a manner that maintains the visual character and architectural scale of existing development within the downtown district." And of course, the, it, you know, this conversation that just went on about floor area ratios and building heights and the amount of footprint that's occupied, it goes right to this, that there's a variance, and this is what, what I, 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 as a non-development, non-planning professional, non-architect, and not a longtime resident of the town, am struggling to understand about this, that there seems to be this consistent uh, dissonance between the way the project is being presented and sold publicly, and the actual nuts and bolts of what's in the article when you care to sort of examine it in detail. And until those things can be brought into conjunction, until the map can be scaled down to reflect the goal of revitalizing Main Street, until the floor area ratio question can be solved, until a more holistic, uh, uh, approach can be taken, as advocated, again, so eloquently by Mr. Hokinson, I, I just feel the project is doomed. Um, and I, again, I want to be a supporter.
Well, thank you, Mr. Miller, and we hope you will be a supporter. I think some of the things you're mentioning, the board has already discussed tonight, it, it's not the end of the conversation by any means. So, um, you know, um, stay tuned, um, and, you know, be involved in the discussions, that's, that's your right as a citizen, and we would hope that you would do that, and we welcome those discussions, so.
I thank you for this time.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Raise hand is up again.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my reason for raising the balance issue, uh, at this time, I'm not accusing the EDC of it only. But it's also, we're speaking to the selectmen, and it's you guys that we're talking to right now. And I'm trying to say, please, let's, let's look at the big picture, and I'm talking not to EDC, I'm talking to the selectmen here. And trying to use good examples that we have done in the town. And I think here's another opportunity, if we address all the issues, and I, I've been fighting for a historic district, a, a national register district, which is really just a rubber stamp. But it is that Roger, ru, rubber stamp that assures the people and the residents in the village that, you know, that character and quality is valued. And so I'm just wanted that opportunity to speak directly to the selectmen and saying, I hope you support these type of topics as they come forward.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hokinson, we appreciate it. All right. I see no other hands raised at this point, uh, I think we have some things to work on, and there's nothing wrong with that. So, that being said, again, uh, Attorney Costa, thank you. And thank you to the public for participating and, you know, letting your voices be heard. So, um, with that.
Lisa, I'm going to move to adjourn, but before I do, um, Mr. Costa, um, this is my first foray, um, as a member of the Board of Selectmen into the, the zoning waters. And, um, I, I, I rarely feel like I can see the shore, but I, I truly appreciate your, uh, your efforts tonight. Um, and, uh, you know, you've, 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 um, you've got a way for bringing clarity to some pretty murky issues, and, and I, for one, really appreciate that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And my motion stands, Lisa, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Oh, I guess I'll, Marty, do you want to do the roll call, or?
You can do it, I hear my name, but my name will be called by somebody other than me.
Okay, now I gotta try to figure out the alphabetical order here. Ms. Malinowski? Hi. Mr. Healy?
Yeah, you got it wrong.
I got it screwed up right off the bat. Yeah, Mr. Stivers?
Hi.
And Ms. Brushew, hi. Again, thank you, everybody.